All right. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like the public to know that pursuant to Governor's Executive Order N 29-20, and in the interest of public health and safety, members of the Planning Commission and staff may attend the meeting telephonically. Further, orders from the San Diego County Health Office prevent persons other than city officials and essential employees to be physically present. The public may view this meeting, submit comments on an item on this agenda, or submit a public comment by going to the city's website at www.cityofelcahones.us/videostreaming. Public comments will be accepted up to the conclusion of the vote of each item. Comments will be limited to 300 words and will be entered into the official commission meeting record. Public comments are being accepted now. Please submit your comments as soon as possible. All right, at this point, let's go ahead, uh, let's go ahead and do a flag salute, and then we'll do a roll call. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this point, we will proceed with roll call.
We're not getting it, sir.
Sarah, you gotta use your mic on.
I don't know.
Tony Sotile is present.
There you go.
Paul Circo.
Present. I heard that.
Present.
Rebecca Pollak Root.
Present.
Okay, all Commissioners are present. Welcome to the El Cajon Planning Commission Meeting via Zoom, or go-to meeting, whatever you want to call it.
The only part we got was, uh, the very first few words, appeals must be made.
Okay, I think we're fixing the glitch here. Okay. Appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with the city clerk before 5:00 PM Monday, May 4th, 2020, and must include the payment of a filing fee. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 114-79, a Commissioner who has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission other than an unescorted view of the subject property is required to disclose such information at the hearing. At this time, we will take comments from any member of the public on any item of business within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Under state law, no action can be taken or brought forward under public comment except to refer it to staff or administration or place it on future agenda. Is there anybody that would like to come forward on public comment?
Are they non-agenda? Are they related to an item, sir?
And it looks like we do have some public comments.
Was, uh, did the meeting start? There's no volume. We're good with that. Okay, next one. Why is there no audio? Next one. No social distancing and no mask. Well, nice, you're all following the CDC and Health Department guidelines. No volume and no social distancing lane. And the last one is related to an item, so that's it for social, for, uh, public comment.
Great, thank you. All right. At this time, we will go to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all the consent items on the calendar. Any Planning Commissioners wish to pull a consent item?
None.
Nope.
No.
No.
Okay, at this time, I make a motion to adopt the minutes. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Marrow, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Please vote. All in favor say yes.
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 All right, I think that was you. Any, uh, any knows? Okay, and consent calendar passes. All right. Next, we're gonna go to Agenda Item Number Two. It is Renet Wireless Communication Facility, a freestanding light poles and a wireless communication facility. Staff?
Thank you, Chairman Marrow. Just testing audio here, are you hearing me? Okay, so we are going to screen share the presentation now for the Renet Wireless Project. You have two moments while I transition. Okay. This is Melissa Devine with the City of El Cajon, here to present on the Renet Wireless Project. Um, this project, um, is being proposed by DePrati Inc. on behalf of AT&amp;T. Hold on just a moment, I have some mild technical details to work through here. This project is a new wireless communication facility, consists of two 80-foot light poles with attached antennas. A new equipment acap, a cabinet is proposed, as well as a roof for an existing trash enclosure. There will be additionally some boring for cabling to connect the poles to the electrical meter. And while it's not before the Planning Commission, I will note here that the City Council will be considering a lease agreement, um, for this facility as part of their decision. The project site is Renet Park, which is located in the Neighborhood Park land use designation in the general plan. It is also ZONE Single Family Residential, RS6. The application is for a specific plan, which is needed to permit a wireless communication facility that exceeds the maximum height limit. Um, the maximum height limit for a freestanding communication facility is 70 feet, and the two light poles would be at a maximum of 80 feet. The existing site is developed as a park and recreation center. There are recreation buildings that are used for recreational classes and activities. The majority of the site is, um, used as a multipurpose field, and there are other amenities, including a playground, a skate park, basketball, as well as picnic areas. This shows an aerial image of the subject site, outlined in white. You can see the multipurpose sports field there towards the center of your screen where the poles would be located. The site is in a predominantly residential neighborhood, um, although there is a school that's located that will cross the intersection of Renet and Emerald Avenue, a hay academy that's located there. This is a site plan depicting the location of the poles. Um, I have circled them here in red. Each pole would be set back from the property line along Renet Avenue, uh, for approximately 20 feet, and the panel antennas attached would, um, uh, would also be set back a minimum of 20 feet. So they'd be set back, um, a bit of a distance from Renet Avenue. Uh, the one pole that you see that is westerly, um, is the, um, pole that will contain the 12 attached panel antenna from AT&amp;T, the applicant, and there would be space for additional providers to co-locate. The area that's identified in the red square is the proposed equipment cabinet located near the west side recreation room, uh, which is also located near the trash enclosure. These are the exterior elevations depicting the two poles. Um, as you can see, there are the 12 panel antennas proposed, as well as space for other carriers. Um, all the cabling would be contained within the center of each pole, and, um, at 80 feet in height, they're approximately around the height of the existing palm trees located at the recreation center. This is a photo simulation or a view, um, if you were standing near the recreation center and looking just about northeast out across the field to where the two poles would be located. And this is a view looking east down Renet Avenue, um, the closest where the, closest street to where the two poles would be located. You can see the height of the poles and, um, how they would visually appear if this project were to be approved and they were installed. This depicts a coverage map, um, with out the facility in the first image on the left, and, um, after, if the facility were to be installed on the right. So there is, and depicted in red and yellow, there are some coverage gaps in this area. This area is not completely served by wireless coverage, and those gaps would be largely remedied by the installation of this facility. This is a lighting exhibit that shows, um, it's a little hard to read, so I'll describe it to you. It shows S1 and S2, the location of the two proposed lighting poles, and the lighting manufacturer looked at how light, um, would emanate from these poles. And along the residential property line, um, near the poles, the maximum would be the area that's shown in, in green, and that's less than .5 foot candles, which is about what you might experience, um, from having a city street light, um, located near your The next exhibit is, shows the potential glare from the lights when they are turned on. Um, the area of most glare is the red and orange, which is contained within the recreation center, and the lighter yellow and the green, um, is less than 7,500 candela's. Um, there's no adopted standard or threshold for glare, however, this, um, this standard of 7,500 candela's, um, has been referenced by the British Institute of Lighting Engineers as being compatible with residential. In addition to these exhibits, um, the applicant will be fine-tuning, um, the lighting as kind of a final step in the installation, um, and of course is, um, welcoming input from the city and neighbors potentially into that process to, um, help ensure that there's no, no glare on adjacent properties. So to summarize, uh, what we're looking at here, we're looking at a specific plan for the two 80-foot light poles with attached panel antennas. They've been placed, um, towards the interior of the park to minimize visual impacts for the neighborhood, and these types of light poles are similar to what you might find in other neighborhood parks in El Cajon to provide field lighting for recreational use during the evening hours. The height is required for, um, a combination of the wireless signal strength that's needed, and also for precise field lighting. So the higher a facility is, when you're talking about lighting, the easier it is to direct that lighting down to where it needs to be and avoid, um, the light glaring or spilling out onto other properties. So the 80 feet is what we determined based on working with the applicant as well as the lighting manufacturer. And then lastly, this additional lighting will increase the usage of the park in the evening hours. When the applicant, um, came to the city to propose a potential wireless facility, um, and we were looking at options, one of the items that came up in speaking with recreation staff is the need for lighted fields in the evening hours for youth soccer and things like that. So we think this could be a beneficial, um, additional lighting to increase the positive usage of the park. Some of the recommended conditions, although there are several in the draft resolution attached to the agenda report, is that the lighting has to be turned off at 9:00 PM. So this is to ensure compatibility with the residential neighborhood and make sure that we're not impacting neighbors, um, with the activity or the lighting. Repair and maintenance activities are also limited to daytime hours, um, and we have standards as well to ensure noise compliance. Uh, staff has identified a CEQA exemption for the project, um, under, uh, Section 15303 for new facilities. This is a CEQA exemption that covers the construction of small facilities. The construction of the two light poles, as well as the equipment cabinet, um, are very minor in scope of construction. In order to approve a specific plan, uh, there is two findings that must be made. One is that the proposed specific plan serves the public interest, um, and secondarily, the proposed specific plan systematically implements the city's general plan. Um, so we know that wireless coverage, um, has become increasingly important to members of our community, um, as they rely on that for their primary needs of communication, but also to our emergency responders and those who are relying on that service to serve the community. And so, uh, in the interest of, public's interest of making sure that we have adequate coverage, as well as implementing general plan policies related to improving our regional services, regional service, um, such as wireless services, as well as the enhancement of providing lighting to extend the hours of the multipurpose field, uh, which will increase the recreational active use of the park. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommends City Council approval of the CEQA exemption and specific Plan Number 532, subject to conditions. This concludes staff's report on the project. Um, we did receive several comments from the public recently, and those were provided to the Planning Commission in writing, so when it comes time to discussion, we do ask that the Planning Commission, um, acknowledge that those have been read, um, or we will read those comments out as necessary. Thank you. We also have the applicant, um, available as well, um, once that time comes. We have, um, Deborah DePrati and Paul Hoekness, uh, with DePrati Inc. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So at this time, um, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff in regards to this project? Paul, go right ahead. You know, can I get back, can you un-share the presentation so I can see everybody here? Let me just see if I can do that. All right, great. Paul?
Quick question on the Renet Park. What current lighting exists? Is that field just unlit at night?
Melissa Devine again. There is some lighting in the park, but it is not for recreational sports play. It's more like safety lighting.
Can I add to that really quick, quick comment regarding that? Just 'cause my children played soccer there for years, and I've actually brought a, a light to the park, via my Bronco, so at night, it's very dark. There is lighting, but it's not, like they said, for, for sport use, so we had to bring lighting in to that park if they, the kids wanted to play soccer. So it would be helpful to have extended hours, since there's limited fields for the kids to play.
Great. Any other questions for?
I have a question.
Great, and I don't see, uh, Sotile, is he still on? Is it just me, or am I missing something?
I, I don't see him.
Okay. Go ahead, Albert.
Uh, I have a question. So when was the, I saw there was, um, uh, four or five actual lights there already, kind of like, uh, facing the park. When were those installed?
I don't see the date for when those were installed.
I'm kind of referring to the letter that was the exhibit from Joan and Stan. They were mentioning that that lighting had recently been installed. I, I just wanted to know how recent it was. Like, I remember being a four-year-old child, I used to live over there, and I always wanted lighting there too, so I'm just wondering when that lighting actually happened.
Um, I don't have that specific city. It looks like we don't have that information.
Okay. Like, your mic's not on, but I can hear you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I was just saying, we don't have that specific information. Um, the city engineer is here as well, and, um, we don't have the date they were installed.
Well, they installed the skate park. Could they have done it then when they installed the skate park? 'Cause I know that's been addition.
It could have been done with the renovation, but I think they have been, um, I think they were there previous to that. We would not be removing those lights. They do provide, um, you know, safety and security, and so they have a very specific purpose. Um, this field lighting would be for the recreational use of the, of the sports field, not for the safety lighting.
Understood. And then the, um, the, uh, I have a question for the, uh, for Melissa. Um, what are the standards we have to meet? I, I know that in a, in a, uh, building plan, there's certain standards, but I'm not sure about a, a park for undergrounding certain, um, uh, telephone wires and that kind of thing. What, what are the standards that have to be met in order for that to happen?
Are you referencing the, the boring that's needed for the electrical connection?
Well, no, I'm referencing that we already have so much, if you take a look at the pictures that you were showing, we have so many overhead wires there, um, and we have so much of that airspace being taken, taken up by just a plethora of telephone wires and electrical wires and, and, and it, I'm not sure if that's gonna be aesthetically pleasing to have more wires and things up there, so I'm wondering if we can actually force them to underground those wires so that they can put theirs up.
Their, their connection will be undergrounded, um, but if you're talking about the electrical connection for the recreation center and the other, uh, electrical transmission, um, I don't believe that there is a plan to underground those in conjunction with this project.
I guess my question is, is there a methodology in which we can perhaps do a trade-off? Where we can, uh, can we actually, as a committee, is there an ordinance that says that they, they, uh, they'll get, uh, some kind of set-off if they do undergrounding of the telephone poles or something like that?
There are thresholds for when undergrounding is required, um, and those are determined by our building official. So whenever a project does come forward, um, usually for new development, someone was to construct a new, say, commercial building, they would need to underground, um, to the, you know, next point of connection, potentially underground a, you know, frontage. However, in this case, um, they're constructing two lighting poles, and it wouldn't fall under a typical development scenario. Um, I don't believe that the building official has identified that they would be required to do any undergrounding in conjunction.
Right. Right, that's kind of where I was hoping I could find something, but I couldn't. Okay.
All right, any other?
Quick question. Yeah, Rebecca. Um, just quick question regarding, 'cause I said that there was two poles there, and one's gonna be done by AT&amp;T, and the other one's gonna be open. Is there gonna be any wiring done to that pole at that time, or is that gonna be a disturbance at a later time if someone decides to go in there?
So at this time, it would be, um, ready for, um, any new carriers that wanted to co-locate there, um, because it is a city property, and they would need to, um, you know, have an agreement with the city in order to install that facility on the pole. Um, but there would be some construction activity involved with additional antennas.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All righty, seeing that there's none, let's go ahead and...
I have one. Oh, yeah. Why, um, why was that aesthetic chosen as opposed to something else?
So the, uh, field lighting selection, uh, was made in conjunction with the applicant and our rec staff and our public work staff. The initial, uh, application was for a faux tree, uh, approximately 50 feet in height, and that tree would be pretty much significantly higher than the other types of trees on the recreation center, with the exception of maybe those palm trees. And it didn't seem to blend in, um, or be as compatible, you know, we're trying to mask here something that, um, you know, potentially would, would stick out like a sore thumb. And it was identified by recreation staff that there was a need for field lighting, and the applicant, um, was willing to, you know, work with us to consider that as an option, to see if that would be feasible. And in this instance, um, you know, we believe that this type of installation is a common facility we do see in a park, um, as opposed to, you know, a 50-foot faux tree. And so it, um, is something that you would, you would typically more find there and more compatible, um, as a, as a...
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I read, uh, some of the correspondence that you... Uh, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, all right. Yeah, I read some of the correspondence that was sent to you regarding the, uh, the cell towers, and I noticed that many people had concerns regarding of the 5G, um, that microwave, uh, you, what we know about that, uh, those concerns that the people have voiced, or some of the people have voiced in the neighborhood.
So radio frequency emissions, um, are regulated by the Federal Communications Commission. Um, the city does not have the authority or the ability to regulate facilities, um, based on any health and safety concerns related to their emissions.
I don't believe those are 5G though, are they?
Um, I would ask...
Yes, I did my own research, and I, I looked on the website regarding the American Cancer Society, uh, what they thought of the, uh, radio frequency and, uh, the concerns it was, and many other organizations, is that they don't have any proof that it's, it's endangering anyone. But, but I wanted to know what the, you know, studies you have had, so, uh, you know, those, we can't take those things into consideration, is that what you're saying, Melissa?
That is correct. We don't have the ability to take, uh, the consideration of the emissions, um, into the decision that you're making.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing that there are none. Um, so were we talking about a recess and then opening public hearings so they can get those in? Okay, great. Okay, great. So let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Um, what do we have? Ms. Diaz.
Hey, before, um, Sarah reads out the public comments to you from the public during the meeting.
I think you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, before, um, Ms. Diaz reads out the comments that were received from the public during the meeting, um, I would like to verify that you have received and read comments. Um, we did receive a letter from Leslie Burgess. So if, um, we can receive conference that you have all read that letter that was sent to you.
Yes.
Yes.
Darren.
Yes.
And Humbert and Darren, okay. Um, and then we received several communications, um, today. Um, all of the comments centering in and around, um, the concerns about the 5G and the health risks related to um, radio frequency emissions. I'm going to read out the names of those who submitted comments. And then once I've read those out, if you would each individually acknowledge that you have read those comments. Veronica Ramirez, Jessalyn Echol, Michelle Hunt, Lisa Mason, and Megan Aguilar.
Yeah. Yes.
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 So all commissioners have read.
I did not see those.
You did not see those, Paul?
No.
Okay.
Were those sent out today?
They were. They were. So perhaps what we could do, um, is we could take a brief recess and allow you to read those comments. And, um, would that be, would you be amenable to that, Darren? Or would you prefer to have them read into the record now?
Uh, no, Paul, you can read those. We give you a quick recess, right?
As long as I have them available to me. Was that sent to our email?
Doing, uh, and if not, we'll just read them into the record for you, Paul.
Okay. Um, was that sent with the link?
No, that was sent, um, this afternoon.
Attachment.
I do not have an email from you after seven forty-nine this morning.
Okay. Well, uh, we will go ahead and read those, um, into the record. So, um, you have some patience with me as I read these into the record. The first comment letter is from Veronica Ramirez. Uh, this email is in regards to the proposal of installing 5G towers at Renet Park. I am a homeowner residing at one ninety-two West Renet Avenue, which is one block away from the park, and we were not included in the group of residents that received notification about this proposal. After learning about this on social media, I began reading on the effects of living near this type of tower, finding both positive and negative feedback. I am now worried about our health. Hopefully, the city conducted a thorough and extensive analysis in order to determine if the installation of these towers will benefit the city of El Cajon while not affecting its residents. Thank you for your time. I look forward to the outcome of the meeting scheduled for today, April twenty-first, twenty twenty. Have a great day, Veronica Ramirez. The next comment is from Jessalyn Echol. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter out of concern for the 5G towers set to go up in El Cajon. I worry about this new technology and the lack of testing about its long-term use. Please consider voting no until we understand more about the implications for our health. No, I'm not one of those who thinks it transmits COVID nineteen, but I am still concerned about increased radiation where we work and play. Thanks for your consideration, Jessalyn Echol, El Cajon resident. The next letter is from Michelle Hunt. Hello, I am reaching out today to express my concern on the impending vote for installing 5G towers at Renet Park. I cannot express how against this I am. El Cajon has enough problems for our children, but I cannot believe this health hazard is even being considered where our children play. No revenue is worth this risk whatsoever. Please consider voting against this matter. Thank you. Michelle Hunt. The next comment letter is from Lisa Mason. We do not want these towers here. Tonight is the night that the city of El Cajon are voting for the 5G antennas at Renet Park. Large number of children play and have activities at this location. There is also a school very close by. Anyone who lives in close proximity and owns a home, this will definitely decrease the value of your home. You have time to voice your opinion. Send your letter by four PM this afternoon. Write a letter to the city council and tell them we do not want these towers here. They are already making millions off the small antennas that they have attached to all the streetlights and electrical poles. The last letter, um, is rather lengthy. It is from Megan Aguilar. Dear Bill Wells, Steve Goble, Phil Ortiz, Gary Kendrick, Bob McClellan, and all other decision-makers in regards to this topic. I am writing because I understand you are set to make a decision regarding installation of a new wireless communication facility consisting of two field lighting poles eighty feet in height with twelve proposed panel antennas and space for potential additional antennas by other carriers. Boring for cables and new equipment enclosure and modification of the existing trash enclosure. I want you to know that my family and I absolutely do not want this 5G technology outside our local park where our children attend recreational classes. It is comparable to strong microwave radiation emitting from it. I know that scientists draw the warning that the millimeter microwave microwave wave, MMW, frequencies to be used for 5G have proven especially dangerous in experiments. We should be reducing our exposure to microwave radiation, not increasing it by putting it up and down every street. Many thousands of scientists, doctors, and organizations for a healthy environment have come out against 5G and/or increasing exposures to microwave radiation. Among these are the World Health Organization, CROCLAS, California Department of Public Health, American Academy of Pediatrics, American Academy of Environmental Medicine, name but a few. Even industry leaders admit there's been no safety testing. This is untested, unsafe technology. With millimeter waves only previously used for military crowd control to create an unbearable burning sensation on the skin, reported to feel like it is on fire and also hurtful to eyes, which must been closed. We are not, we are not to use the skinny pegs in an experiment. That is illegal, according to their Nuremberg Code. I don't want 5G small cells anywhere near my family. We work hard to stay healthy and do not want to be thickened by 5G on our streets or by our homes, nor does anyone I know. I also feel it is an invasion of privacy, and our security is compromised by the 5G plans I've read about. The cells may cause fires, and we certainly don't need more of those. Mini trees will also have to be cut. I will no longer be sending my children to do any more recreational classes with the city of El Cajon if this is approved. Other counties and cities and members of Congress are fighting the FDC orders related to fast-tracking 5G, and I want our county to do the same. There is no excuse to do otherwise. Keep our ordinances limiting cellular antennas and towers to commercial areas. Keep 5G entirely out of our community. The current county ordinances took a lot of time, effort, and legal work to gain. Don't throw them out. I will be watching exactly how you handle this, and it will impact my votes and support for you in future elections. Don't harm my family, protect the public health, represent residents, not for-profit corporations who don't care. Sincerely, Megan Aguilar of one seven four four Vista Grande Road.
Okay, so we have all those read in. Paul, were you able to hear them all?
Thank you, I was.
Great, okay. Is that it for the public comment?
No other public comment came in on this item.
Yeah, great. All right, now is there any public that is connected at this time, or is that it? Via phone?
The applicant would like to respond, if possible, when it's my turn.
Yes, well, let's do this. Do I have a motion to close public hearing now that we've heard all the testimony?
Isn't the applicant part of public hearing?
Oh, that's right. Okay, yeah, let's have the applicant come forward. Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Hello, um, my name's Deborah DePatty Gardner. I represent AT&amp;T. Melissa, would you be able to put up the short little presentation that I sent you?
Uh, yeah.
So, um, quickly, I I did want to speak briefly regarding the 5G. This facility does not comprise, does not presently have a 5G millimeter wave antenna proposed. And one of the letters was discussing small cell 5G, which is not, is a completely different installation. That's what's going on on right-of-way installations. This is a macro cell, um, installation comprised of twelve antennas, presently none of which are the 5G. So, um, the millimeter wave technology actually is about eighteen months out and is not actually being installed on anything within the city of San Diego right now, or county of San Diego, on macro sites. But I can further address any questions you have on that.
Thank you for that. Thanks for clarifying that.
No problem.
Any questions for the applicant?
Melissa, are you going to be able to get that up, or should I just speak to it?
Yes, I believe it's up.
Oh, is it? I can't, I can't see it.
Give me just one moment.
Yes, Commissioner Cabrera, you had a question?
I'll wait to see if the presentation.
It's, it's really brief. Um, oh, there, there it is. Okay, so I wanted basically to address a few of the letters that came in in terms of why we selected this site. So, um, AT&amp;T pursued an additional site in the, within the jurisdiction of El Cajon, basically to fill a gap. And it, if you can see, Renet Park is essentially in the middle of our search area. And if, um, you can pan out just a little bit, there's the little green stars surrounding the circle. Those are existing AT&amp;T on-air sites. So basically, the, a cell site operates like a honeycomb, and to be a, um, to be operating efficiently, the cell site essentially needs to be in the middle of the honeycomb. So as you can see, Renet Park is basically in the middle of our search area, and if you move down two slides, Melissa, I, we can show you the coverage gap. We do the next page there. So basically, this is showing the green is good coverage, which would basically would be in-building coverage. So if you walked into your home, you'd still have coverage with your AT&amp;T device. And again, want to clarify, this is solely for AT&amp;T coverage. Um, the red is basically no coverage, meaning if you were walking on the street, you would have no, no coverage. And yellow is basically weak coverage. So if you were on the street, you maybe got one or two bars and you but if you walked into a building, you probably wouldn't hold the call. So this is a area with that's needs in-building coverage. I'm sure all of you are aware, you'd like to be able to be in your car, walk out of your car and into your home and hold the call. As all of you know, I've got four kids at home. We're all using technology. We're all sitting here on this, you know, so technology is important, and I understand residents' concerns, but in this situation, we're trying to meet the needs of the city a- as well as, um, the company, AT&amp;T, but I, just really briefly, I don't view AT&amp;T as a commercial service in the sense that, you know, our cell phones are our primary, primary modes of, um, communication now. I don't even use a home phone anymore. So it's really a utility. So and in addition, this site will be providing FNET coverage, which is for first responders. It's a, um, federal rollout throughout the country so that there's, um, effective coverage for first responders. So this will be a FNET facility. So then, going back to why we're here, um, so basically it's in the middle of the honeycomb. Um, one of, I wanted to, if you'll just go right down to that last slide, then I can kind of wrap it up. So basically, there are a couple of letters that said, you know, why aren't you in the industrial area adjacent to I eight and El Cajon Boulevard? And as you can see, the purple star to the far west, that's the industrial area they were speaking of. It's basically on the far west side of the search area, and it would not be able to fill the gap. And then the other letter, and I apologize, I don't have the name of the person, I kind of just grabbed their quotes. They were asking, why couldn't we locate at the commercial um, corner at Chase and Estes? And, um, in addition to the fact that it's only like a twenty-foot building and anything of any scale that would provide the coverage we need would be very out of scale. It also is pretty far to the south. And then they also suggested light poles at the Little League Field. And again, that Little League Field is just too far to the south. So all things considered, as Melissa suggested, we initially looked at putting in a tree, worked with staff. They liked the idea of having lighting. We added a second light at their request. And I did want to mention that photo sims actually show a full build-out with four carriers, two carriers on each pole. We're only proposing to put in the twelve antennas on the westerly pole. So I just wanted to point that out. When you're looking at the sims, it shows, you know, three additional carriers. So that's about all I had to say, so I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I have a quick question regarding the the current service. I know that there is a site at Grossmont High School next to the bleachers on the visitor side of the field. Is that one of the poles you currently have?
Um, I, I, um, if you look at the, um, gosh, what's the best slide to, okay, if you go to, Melissa, if you jump back up to that second slide. So the, the sites I'm showing that basically see this site, because it, all of these, this is a macro site. So a macro site has to actually physically see another macro site to talk to it. So basically, north to directly north or kind of northeast is, that's the county courthouse. Then to the west, that's in an industrial, I can't remember the exact name of the building, but it's a, a small industrial building that that's located on. And then this one, this may be Grossmont High School. I apologize, I don't actually, yeah, there it is, Grossmont High. So the one over here to the far west, kind of down the green star, that is actually Grossmont High School. Yes.
Yeah, so I've seen that post there numerous times, so I know that they were concerned about where kids play, but kids play football there and play, practice sports every single day. And.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, my kids went to that school, so I, I just wanted to voice my concerns that they're concerned about kids, but they've been there at school for a while, so.
And I just wanted to say that, I mean, it's a tip, uh, of this sort of installation, it was designed also, I wanted to make sure that Melissa had mentioned Musco Lighting was designed the light standards, who basically does all the light standards for all the schools and parks pretty much in the county. So the light, AT&amp;T did not design the lighting. Musco Lighting designed the lighting. Obviously, we're just putting on the antennas.
Great. Commissioner Circo, you had a question?
Um, Deborah, could you address the wiring? We talked briefly about boring, putting the holes in, getting the equipment built, and then the poles up. Can you tell us if the wires are going to be already in the pipes ready for another carrier to just put panels on and their own equipment in the equipment room?
Yes, so basically, there's hand holes that are, so basically, these, um, are engineered to accommodate the two carriers and the, uh, from the equipment cabinet to the pole, the, the underground wires, it'll be bored, and then they're basically pulled up into the pole. And the, um, all the wiring will be inside of the pole.
So it'll be plug-and-play for the next carrier to just install panels and then go to the equipment and room and
Correct.
install whatever they need. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, any other questions for Deborah? Commissioner Cabrera.
So you're looking at that graph that Melissa had up earlier, the map. And I, I think the letter that one of the, uh, citizens wrote about the industrial area actually is referring to your yellow spaces. Uh, uh, that is more to the west and to the south where the curvature occurs on Interstate Eight. There are many, uh, there's many office buildings there, and I know, because I used to actually rent one of them, that when, as soon as we went into the building, we couldn't get any self stuff. Yeah, right there. So on that side, and then to the south, there's many, uh, restaurants and, and then office buildings there too, so I think they're talking about that area because everybody knows. So I think they're talking about that area, because everybody knows that we lose our connections there all the time, and there's no solution. I don't think they're talking about the purple area necessarily. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering if you're missing the target, actually.
I, I can only address what our requirement was from AT&amp;T, and it was to fill the gap of coverage that the circle represents. So the area you're describing is far outside of that area. And I did my best to interpret the letter, and they discussed an industrial area between El Cajon Boulevard and 8, and your industrial zoning is represented by purple. So I assumed it was that. So I may be incorrect. But in terms of the area you're describing, it would not fall within the service requirements of this ring.
The purple area is being serviced by the ICE Company Tower. I think, I think most residents know that. So I'm just, I'm concerned that AT&amp;T is doing all this and missing the people that really need it, honestly.
I'm, I'm sorry, as I mentioned, we are doing as we were requested by AT&amp;T. I, I'm just a consultant that processes permits, and AT&amp;T tells me where they want the coverage. And that's based on the lack of coverage. So as mentioned, the, the blue outline, oval outline represents the coverage area that we're, the gap that we're trying to fill.
One more question, why not fall within the 70 feet? Why 80 feet?
I believe Melissa addressed that. It was actually more specific to the lighting requirements, not the cell site coverage.
Okay. Understood. Now, was there any discussion about shielding the lighting? With the lighting company?
Yes, so I, again, we went through, Melissa briefly went through those. And if she can pull them back up, I could try to speak to them. But basically, the lighting is being, was being designed to obviously be primarily within the, the ball field area. She mentioned that at the, they analyzed what the Candela would be at the line of the residential, basically at the sidewalk. And it's 500 Candela or less, which is basically like a streetlight. And 250 Candela, which is basically at the house line, is like 100 watt bulb. So it, and then in addition, once it's installed, the lighting company will work with the city to make sure that if there's any issues, that they can modify the lighting to, you know, clarify or, or make sure that nobody has any issues. So that all those lights can be manipulated in a way that if there's, you know, obviously, the lights are being pointed down at the field, the, the goal is not to go beyond that. So they can work with the city to make sure that everybody's happy.
There's a difference between the light housing, which is specified, and light shielding. So I would like to see verbiage in there about actual shielding that can be manipulated as opposed to just the housing maneuvered.
I'm totally, I'm totally okay with that, that, that all the lighting aspect, I have to tell you, is really the city's call. That's not us.
Okay.
So anything they want to specify, I'm totally okay with.
Uh, thank you. There are some discrepancies in the floor plan and the elevations. But basically, I'll cut to the chase. The roofing material that you're using for the new equipment, what kind of material are you putting on there? I would like to see it, there's been a great effort to make this park look nice again. And I'd like to see the same kind of roofing material as on the park itself. The, the recreation room.
It's currently noted to, to basically match the existing. So if you're not happy with the existing building's roof, then we should probably talk about that. And we're, we don't have construction drawings submitted. So if there's an alternate rooftop material that you would like, then, again, we're total into doing whatever you want. As presently noted on the plans, that we're gonna, basically, it's a standing seam, standing seam metal roof per City of El Cajon Storm Water Protection Program.
Right. That, that's on the trash enclosure.
Correct.
Correct.
And then what will happen on the equipment room?
No, there'll be no roof.
It'll just be open. It, yes.
Okay.
It's a flat, flat roof. Flat, yes.
Is there any way to make that more aesthetic?
Um, this is a CMU block enclosure. Cal, or, right, Paul, this is the prefabricated shelter?
No, it's the, it's, it's the slump block, and it matches the existing trash enclosure that's got the green double gates. If I share my screen, if I know how, I can show you. But the, the park wanted us to mimic that, and it's gonna be, any water that goes in there is just gonna drain into the planter boxes. And there's gonna be no runoff into the parking lot. And the only roof that's going on there, I got that detail from the city, that was a standard, from Parks Department or Public Works, that was what they wanted to be put on the drawings, to go over the trash enclosure. And that shell, that's, that's basically it. So it's tucked up tight to the building. It's gonna kind of just blend right in with the building and the trash enclosure. The only roof goes over the trash enclosure.
And then the, you see the, the exhibit that you're currently showing right now has an arrow that says "existing trash enclosure" with the new metal roof, right?
That's correct.
Per the city standard. I would like to see it as per this, what the metal roof is of the building.
Okay, the, the roof on the building, looking at the pictures, it's relatively flat, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm looking at pictures. It's got a green band around it. The, that, that, that could be tweaked to however you want it. But the, the, the building adjacent to it is pretty much flat.
Okay, so you see how your elevation here is, is showing it spreading from the roof towards me. Now, now let's, let's move to the page preceding this one. So here, you're showing on the upper right, almost like a gable end that's going in two directions as opposed to a shed. So what's going on?
That is a good catch. It, it's a bit, correct me if I'm wrong, but the standard that we were given, that should just be a single angle, and it should just be, like you said, one pitch going one way or the other. I believe it was going, we talked about that. I think, I can't remember, but the way we wanted it to go was, I believe there's a, a planter box to the east of it. So, so logic would be the water would run off and go right into the ground. There is plants around it. I think there is a, a planter box to the east side of it. So logic would say it, it should all slope to the east. So yeah, that, that's incorrect.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Wow, nice catch.
Okay.
Mic wasn't on.
Paul, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is Paul Oakness. I work for Trottie Inc.
I have one clarification in response to Commissioner Cabrera. We do have a condition of approval stating that the field lighting shall be shielded as appropriate and directed downward to the multipurpose field to minimize light and glare. That is condition 4B.
Great, thank you. Fellow commissioners, any other questions this time?
I don't have any.
Okay. Commissioner Circo, Commissioner Rude?
Thank you.
All right, any, no other public comments have come in at this time, correct? All right. Well, this time, let's make a motion to close public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure who said that, but I'll, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, second by Commissioner Rude. All right, everyone in favor, say aye.
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 All right. All right, well, public hearing is closed. Any other deliberation or questions, fellow commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Circo?
I just wanted to say that I was impressed by the splash map for the lighting. Having driven by Granite Hills when the lights are on, and Kennedy Park when the lights are on, looking at that splash map and hearing, that impresses me how far we've come with park lighting technology in the last few years. So thank you for that.
Great. Any other comments, commissioners?
I have one.
Yes.
I, I think it's a good project. I think the staff and the applicants did a good job in bringing everything together. And all the concerns that were brought up, I think they've been all addressed. And I think we should move forward with the, for the approval, or giving the city council a recommendation for approval, rather.
Great. All right, well, thank you, Commissioner Sotile. Yes, Commissioner Cabrera?
I, I grew up in that area. In a, in a house that was condemned after we moved out. So that area has been, been kind of a little problem child for a while. And I see how the commission and the city has addressed fixing up that area. And I, I, as a citizen, I'm appreciative of that. But I'm concerned about making it look more, less pleasing. Like, like maybe this is the bad part of town, so let's go ahead and just add more wires and more overhead things. When we're trying to clean up the area, we've done great efforts to clean it up. Now we have so many overhead telephone wires and electrical wires and these poles everywhere. And then we're gonna have an exemption, and we're gonna get even taller. And there's no effort to really make it look aesthetically pleasing. It's just, I, I think it's gonna look like a complete hodgepodge of just wiring and just polluting the entire space. Not from the 5G, but from visual pollution. So I'm very concerned about it. I'm very concerned about getting some answers or looking at it differently than just passing another tower that, that's just gonna make that whole neighborhood not look as great as it does. Now, sometimes we have different events there. And I also want to be cognizant of the fact that how are these towers being that tall gonna affect different events and that kind of thing? So I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. I need somebody to convince me to say yes.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Um, this is, my kids played soccer for years. My kids, one of our first fields she used was that field alone. I was the manager of a soccer team around there for years. I had to move around lights to field after field after field after field, because there was not adequate lighting. It wasn't the safe place for the kids to play, and you have limited time on a field at night. And there's some older teams that would like to play, and at night, you can't play there. So I understand it's not, may not be the most aesthetically pleasing, but I can appreciate the fact that they added the lighting, because I think it is needed in that area. I think it would allow the kids to have time to play. And I think if the kids have the time on the field to play soccer, I don't think they care about a pole that's in the air. I think that they want to play, and having that lighting there would be helpful for the neighborhood and helpful for the kids to play. And I think doing it for the community to allow them to play and be a safer environment for everyone that's there. Because I know when we did play and I had to move the lights over there, it was a loud generator. It was not aesthetically pleasing. And I think these poles are a much better addition than a generator with a light box that we have to remove the wheels because we don't want someone to take it and have to leave it at the park or move it from time to time. So I think.
I appreciate the comment. I, I myself learned how to walk at that park. So I want to say, I want to ask you a question, though. Do you, do you want me to reopen public comment?
Who are you asking the question to?
Uh, the lady that just spoke.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, real quick, commissioners, I just also want to make sure everyone understands, this is just a recommendation to go to city council. This is not a final decision. And there, obviously, there'll be a lot of public comment and everything there.
That's true.
So, I mean, at this point, I, I don't really need to do more, because I think I'm ready for a motion.
I, I, I want it to be on the record, though, that I would like to see the lighting there, but not necessarily the cell towers.
Great, okay, is that on the record?
I'd like to recommend an individual voice vote for this final vote.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, well, we gotta have a motion first and a second, and then we can do an individual voice vote.
May I say something before we make a vote? So the city worked with AT&amp;T and the rec department to recommend the light pole construction. Even if there were no wireless carrier involved, we would be looking at these poles being that high in the field. So we're not looking at this as two separate issues. We're not voting as two separate issues. We're voting them as the same issue. But to me, this is a double win for the city, getting the light poles built by AT&amp;T. And not having an awkward 50-foot conifer next to all those palm trees.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that we're, we are talking about light poles in a park that happened to also be a wireless facility.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Circo. Yes, Commissioner Sotile?
I'd like to move to make a resolution. I'd like to move for approval.
I second that.
Okay, do we need to just kind of have them go through the entire recommendation, or the, you know, repeat everything? Can you read it out there, Tony?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I move to adopt the next resolution.
Hold on one second. Yes.
Um, Commissioner Sotile, were you able to listen in on the entirety of the meeting?
I, I missed some because I was disconnected, but I, I can't, but I could hear the meeting. I, you could not hear, I cannot speak, but I could hear.
Okay.
You could hear, you were able to listen to the entire meeting. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner Sotile?
I move to adopt the next resolution in order of recommending city council approval of the proposed CEQA exemption with specific plan SB number 532, subject to condition.
All right, do you have a second? All right, motion made by Commissioner Sotile, intended by Commissioner, Commissioner Rude. All right, we're gonna do an individual voice vote. So just, I vote yes to adopt. Next. One at a time, go ahead.
I'll go no.
Okay, one no, one yes?
I vote yes.
Okay. Commissioner Sotile?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and would you repeat that?
I vote yes.
All right, four to one, motion carries. Thank you. It goes on to city council for the final decision. All right.
Thank you very much. You guys did a great job.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. And I'm glad to see those kids, you know, play after hours. It's dark. All right, next agenda item. All right, next agenda item. Give me one second here. All right, one second, my tablet's freaking out, guys. All right, it is, agenda item number three, Marshall Personal Storage. The request is to allow for an increased height of a personal storage facility, and is CEQA exempt, and staff recommendation is approved. Okay, staff?
Thank you. Okay. So, the project, uh, before you today, the Marshall Personal Storage Facility is a CUP amendment request uh, for an amendment of conditional use permit uh, number 2250. It approved and authorized a personal self-storage facility, um, at 620, 640 South Marshall, which is currently a vacant site. Um, the amendment would allow for an increase in height of the facility, it's an existing impermitment at height of 35 feet to 50 feet in height. And the new project, um, would um, go from three stories over basement to five stories over basement, which results in an increase in the building area from approximately 60,000 to approximately 95,000 square feet. There are no changes proposed to the site plan, the only change is to the building height, um, building design and growth floor area. The site is located in the general commercial land use designation um, in the general plan, and is also zone CG general commercial. The site is located within the transit district specific plan area, a uh, plan that was developed for the area surrounding the transit station. And, um, the personal storage is a conditionally permitted use in our zoning code. Um, meaning the use does require a condition use permit to ensure compatibility. And in addition, there are personal storage development standards specific to that use in our code. This is an aerial photograph of the subject site, located there just north of the existing BMW dealership on Marshall, north of Elkhorn Boulevard, south of Palm. And it is vacant, um, most of the improvements on the site have been demolished. It was, for a long time, a standard, uh, property, and, um, the new property ownership, um, is wanting to move forward and provide a beneficial use for the property. This is a site plan, uh, which remains largely unchanged from the approved project. Um, I will note here, though, there is the MTS right-of-way just immediately east of the property, as well as overhead utility lines that run along, um, the, the rear of the property as well. This really constrains the potential development of the property. As the applicant looks, um, for how to increase their not leasable area, their only real option was to increase the height, um, because they do not have any additional, uh, property area to work with, um, because of that SG GNE, um, easement requirement. This is the, uh, sort of, the approved elevations for the project. And you'll see that the approved project's very contemporary design, um, with blues and grays, um, and white is the predominant color for canopy features, as well as these, um, so storefront units, um, and, uh, the additional sandhill glass. And the next elevation is the revised street elevation. Um, this is the one that has the most significant modification from the approved. They did keep the, um, elements, sort of these vertical, uh, repetitive elements to kind of break up the facade, and, um, did step back the fourth and fifth story, kind of between the two tower pieces. Um, so that the appearance of the project as viewed from Marshall Avenue, there's a setback there on the, the height of the building, um, to keep it more in scale, um, you know, with the potential pedestrian or, or somebody who's at the street level. And they kept the same high-quality materials and design as the approved project. Um, there are obviously some modifications to deal with the increase in height. Um, but that is what they're proposing. There are some real minor modifications to the other elevations, primarily, um, modification of the material at the rear of the building, which faces the MTS right-of-way, uh, from block to stucco. And then this is a, uh, rendering of the project, um, that were to be built, I'd like to note here that some of the street scape enhancements that are part of the project includes new street level landscaping and street trees, um, which do implement the recommendations of the transit district specific plan. And while the project, um, will be, uh, somewhat higher than the surrounding development, the site does slope up from the street level to the rear, and so, um, the, the greatest height and experience will be from the street level at Marshall Avenue. Um, and the designation of the property for large format commercial uses in the transit district plan um, dislones itself to larger floor plate uses, which is a self-storage. The requested height deviation is authorized through the transit district specific plan. The intent of that plan is really to incentivize new development in and around the transit district, or in and around the transit center, um, to encourage more TOD-type development, um, and bring in new investment into the area. Um, and so, the increase in height from the maximum authorized of 35 feet to the 50 feet, um, is through this mechanism in the specific plan. Uh, which does require that in conjunction with the request for the deviation, that the project does have a public benefit or development amenity. Um, the project is including some green building strategies, um, or enhancements, including lighting control, and then there are the enhancements to the street scape that I mentioned, the new street trees and landscaping, um, that we believe, uh, service development amenities for the project. The previous project was determined to be a subsequent activity under the program EIR that was adopted from the, for the Transit District Specific Plan. And so, um, this project has subsequently also been determined to be, um, within the scope of that program environmental impact report, and so our recommendation is that planning commission find that secret determination, and also to approve the CUP, uh, I apologize, there is a typo there, that should be CUP dash 2020 dash, or 2019 dash 0011, which is an amendment of CUP number 2250, subject to conditions. And that concludes that presentation. Believe the, um, applicant, Robert Garmo, as well as the applicant, um, architect Bruce Jordan, are available, um, Mr. Chair, once you are ready for, um, public comment, and I do believe there's also a public comment letter submitted as well. Thank you.
Okay, great, so, uh, fellow commissioners, did you have any questions for staff on this project? Yes, Commissioner Circo?
Though, I really love the way that the front, the east side, has been developed. I love the two towers and the, the step back, and everything that breaks up the size of this giant building. But I was looking at the west elevation, and I was wondering if there's anything we can do about that side, because that is what the trolley commuters are going to be looking at. Even if it was as simple as having ivy climbing the wall, or spilling off the roof, but the west elevation is rather bland.
Give me one moment, I'm going to be bringing up the plans on screen share very shortly.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, um, and if I might, um, here, address that briefly.
Yes.
Thank you, we did have, um, discussions regarding this elevation, and the constraint there, and the applicant can address this more, is really those, uh, overhead SG GNE wires. Um, essentially, SG GNE does not want anything, um, within any sort of proximity to their overhead, um, fires, and so, it really limits what the applicant was able to do with that elevation, um, because obviously, they needed to kind of, uh, keep the, the facade fairly uniform, um, in order to maximize their developable area.
Great, thank you, we'll address that more in public hearing. Any other questions for staff?
Um, yes, I have one.
Yes.
Uh, do you think, uh, lighting might help the look of the building from the trolley side?
I do believe there is lighting on that side. Just a moment here. Okay, so, um, 16, call out number 16, I've kind of zoomed in here, uh, quite to some extent. Um, but you'll see these small rectangles along this facade, those are lighting fixtures.
Right, and they're shining, uh, against the building, uh, shooting up?
Um, I believe they would be directed downward, but I would ask the applicant to clarify that I don't recall.
Yeah, if you have li- lighting that goes up and down both ways, it would make the, uh, building look, uh, much nicer.
I think there is, um, a lighting exhibit, so give me one moment. So, let's call that as accent light fixture mounted on building wall. If we go to the second sheet. Um, I do believe it is this specification sheet here. And so, it looks like it is an up-down wall mount, I, I think I would, um, like to defer to the applicant as to whether that will cast an uplight, um, based on their current plan.
Great, any questions for staff, if not, we'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Yes, Commissioner Cabrera?
I have a question. Uh, how many storage units were in the original approved, and how many storage units are there now?
Uh, give me a few moments, and I will gather that information for you.
Oh, and I also have to, uh, I actually have to make part of the record that, uh, Melissa did send me an email with the previous, uh, approved plan. So that I could make reference between the two.
Which I also have, uh, with me available this evening, too, for reference.
I have a quick question regarding, it's, it has the gated entry to get in and out of the parking. Is there gonna be like a combo code, or how is the public gonna access that to get into the facility, since there isn't really a lot of street parking?
Yes, it will be a secured facility, and there will be, um, uh, access for the tenants, um...
Okay.
Through, uh, you know...
Code or what have you?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
I, I do believe that the applicant may have the information on the number of units more readily, um. The number of units is not something that we look at as part of the, um, regulatory review of the self-storage, we're looking, um, more at, at other development standards.
Okay, I will ask that. I'll ask the applicant later, uh, what was the amount of setback? The differential in the setback amount that needed to be, uh, additional, I guess, additional setback amount?
In the other stories?
Uh, no, you had, you had said that the, the, the reason why they went higher was because they discovered a setback that was more than what they had thought, what was that amount?
Um, no, the issue is not that they had to set, uh, change the configuration of the building. Um, it was, it was in reference to the fact that they could not expand the building out to increase the leasable area, um, because of the setback that SG GNE requires from their overhead utility lines. Um, they have an easement, but they also require a setback from the actual arm of the utility line, and so, the, I believe it's about 10 feet, um...
So, they lost about 10 feet in the building?
It's additional 10 feet, so, basically, if they were to, had been able to develop this property to its fullest extent, if that constraint had not been located there, um, you know, they, there's quite a significant amount of area back there, because there is no setback required, uh, for an interior property line.
Okay, and one last question, how many, uh, 56-foot tall buildings does Elkhorn have?
This is, um, approximately the size of, um, the building at Main and Magnolia, um, that's currently occupied by Borizo Health, so, it's around that, that same height. Um, they also have the city hall and the county, uh, regional center building as well. Um, so, um, and our hotels, our newer hotels, in addition, our four stories.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff, if not, let's go ahead and open up public hearing. Um, can you, uh, move the presentation, I get my screen back, I can make sure if anyone's asking questions. Thank you. All right, so, this time, do we have any comments from the public? One?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we have one, uh. The question is, I would ask staff to explain why 55 feet is being allowed via a variance as opposed to applicant processing as a specific plan. Please know, I sent a detailed email to staff at 6:40 PM in hopes to respond to my question, but not sure if staff will see my email before the meeting. Please advise staff, I am available via phone or email, respectfully, Nancy K. Bain.
Great, thank you. So, on the other side of the track, that, that starts to slope up, correct, and I can't remember, is that where the freeway starts, or is that the other cluster of buildings, like the recycling center and all that stuff, and the ice house and all that, is that correct?
There is additional industrial area, um, behind the, the MTS track.
Okay.
Before the freeway. Yeah, so there's an additional building up there, and you'll see it if you look in the site section in the plan, um, you'll see the th- this building in relation to the other buildings there.
Perfect, okay, great. All right, so, uh, let's go ahead, this time, if we have some questions for the applicant. I know there was, uh, is that you, Bruce?
It is.
Okay, great, so I know the question that we had was about the lighting, and whether or not that was gonna project both upwards and downwards. What's your plan on that?
That was our intent, is to have the lighting project up and down, so it could project like the landscaping on the ground, but also the face of the building going vertically.
Okay, great, and what was the difference between the original plan and the new plan when it came to number of, uh, storage units?
The, the number was, was, I can't remember the original number, but it was approaching, was approaching 600, it was like 575 or so in terms of units, and we're just, just a little shy of 700 units now.
Great.
So, in, in self-storage, it's common to look at the square footage, because sometimes, over time, they'll take those units, if the demand drops, they'll make some of the units smaller. So, the unit count can change over time, it's very typical for self-storage.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, fellow commissioners, I know you had some questions for the applicant. Yes, Mr. Circo?
All right, uh, so, I like the idea of uplighting. Is there any variation in the uplighting? I mean, not that it has to be a light show or... I mean, not that it has to be, uh, light show or anything, but is it just plain white uplighting on a white wall?
Well, it's not just going to wash the whole wall because it'll be narrow at the fixture itself. And it'll go up on an angle that widens and it'll go down on an angle. So it'll be a little bit more dramatic than just flat uplighting on the building.
Okay. I know with LED, uh, the controls available have, we've gone so far. Uh, I don't know if the owners have given any thought to holiday lighting, like Christmas or Easter or, uh, New Year's, being able to install color variable lights for the upsplash. Uh, they've done this in Riverside County at the water facility. I don't know if you've been up there, uh, Diamond Valley Lake. Has this huge building and there's, there's some architectural interest, but it's not as great as the fact that at night it got their lights on and they have a various, various color palettes that they put up on the wall.
Very common. Well, we make use of a lot of that, especially in the window glass that's facing the street for different themes of different holidays and, and things like that. So that's a common thing that we do to almost all of our buildings now, all of these self-storage projects.
Nice.
So very common.
Is that something that you might do in the uplighting or just in the windows?
Yes, we could look at that. I'd be, I'd be happy to, uh, accommodate that. I think that could be done fairly easy. We just completed, um, a building, uh, went through the city council in Azusa with the lighting and they were so impressed with that lighting, and this is very things that we're talking about here, that they're making that building kind of a, a central theme for the city because of the, the flexibility that we can do and the things we can do with the LED lighting now.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, any other questions, fellow commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Cabrera.
Uh, Mr. Jordan, welcome back.
Thank you.
I, I, as you know, I was an extreme proponent of your project and I thought it was beautiful. It was fantastic, probably going to be one of the top five buildings in all of El Cajon. Uh, however, uh, I'm gonna just tell you right off the bat, I'm gonna vote no. I'm not happy with this at all. Um, I think your beautiful architecture that you had set with the linear, almost mid-century, kind of like accenting the, what you had going on with, uh, with BMW and how it was, you even figured the street and how the curvature was going to work on the street. Now I have concerns. I'm concerned that we have now seven hundred units instead of five hundred and something. And I'm concerned that your trash is not big enough and that peop- there's not enough parking and that people are going to be outside in that area and they're going to leave their trash and their mattresses and stuff all over there. And I'm always concerned about that curb right there where that, where the, where the, uh, where you have the wash and the BMW. There's been some accidents there and I'm, I'm really worried about people having to come in and having to go out and it not being one-way, it's two-way. And I, it's always been a tricky thing and I think you had a good solution in not overpacking it. And I think that now we're just making another big square box in El Cajon. Cause honestly, you look at it, you lost your, you lost that beautiful tower that had that offsetting plane with the metal roof and it kind of echoed the linear and now it's all vertical and it's a square box. And I don't think your three-foot offset is enough. I think it needs to be like eight feet. I, I, it, it's gonna look flat. It, I, it doesn't look like that right now. But I think in the end, when we have, we have, uh, we, we have, I, I want to know, you know, I, I was brilliant before. What, why did you have to increase the amount of units? And why not four stories instead of five?
You'd like me to address that?
I, I want you to address that and, and the trash enclosure and the parking.
Certainly. Well, again, as Melissa mentioned, the site plan has not changed, the access, the trash enclosure. One of the things that, that is most common today for trash enclosures for self-storage, they're in a unit that's locked up. And the reason is so that the manager can police what goes into that trash enclosure so they're not in the mattress disposal business. So the last thing a self-storage wants to do is deal with that kind of trash in an unintended trash enclosure. So these are watched very carefully for environmental reasons, for a lot of reasons. So the, the customer has to come into the office, request the key, so the manager can watch what goes in there so they don't get into the trash business. They want the customer to haul that mattress out of there. They don't want to deal with the trash in it. So, um, we've designed about five thousand self-storage projects nationally and internationally. We actually write a lot of ordinances for self-storage and consult to a lot of cities. So this is a very common and very typical thing in, in self-storage of today to have a, um, contained locked-up trash enclosure that's controlled by the manager. So hopefully that addresses, um, that. Um, what we did, the rea- one of the reasons that we had to come back and request the, the additional height, the easement on the back, we have a little over twenty-five feet of setback on the rear, on the, on the railroad side, on the light rail side.
What was the original setback?
It, it was the same, it has not changed. But what happened is after we get the cost of construction, we went to bid, the cost of construction, the cost of the land, the project was not feasible financially. So we went back, sat down with staff, uh, to be able to add this and now we have re-bid the project and now it is financially viable. Um, the additional square foot we added made that difference. So we believe that the upper, a- actually you mentioned it's a box and it's less of a box now because of the fact that the fourth and fifth floor are setback and decoupled from the front face. So I feel that the, the, um, the articulation on the building is really quite good and I feel quite good about it.
I think you had, I think you had it when you had the, the tower and the entrance. It didn't say self-storage and it didn't have two mirrored things. Yeah, I, I think you had some kind of, I think you had a really nice flair about that when it was a separate little entrance and a tower with its own cover. And then you had the, you had the marrying it to the ground with the other covers. And now you just have two big square boxes on either side and it looks like a self-storage. It didn't look like a self-storage before. Now it's, and here's where I'm going with this. I, 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 I want you to address something here. Uh, the redevelopment area, I'm sure you've read about it and, and you've taken a lot of time because you, you, you are a fantastic architect. I'm not going to take that away from you. I, that, there, there was a lot of, a lot of debate, uh, when the city was coming up with this area and trying to, trying to get happening exactly what you're doing. Uh, we want to fix up this area, but it, it calls for calming measures, uh, reinforcing a sense of place and community and landscaping and walkability and a focus on residential uses and bonuses densities for people that actually make smaller forms. This is not a small form. Now you have a sidewalk and a big tall building and it's one of the tallest ones in all of El Cajon and it's, I don't think, that's not what that flavor was supposed to be in that area. I want to see it farther back. I don't want to see a little three-foot setback on something that is fifty-six feet tall. It's not gonna, it's not gonna penetrate, it's not gonna show as an articulation. On the other hand, it'll show that way, but not in real life.
And, and if you look at the building and how it situates relative to the other buildings, you know, it is fifty-six at the street level, which is substantially lower than the rear side. So the rear of the building is about the same height as the, the building across the tracks from it.
Yeah, I thought it was brilliant, the way you handled it before where you said, okay, look, and I'm gonna take the mean and then I'm gonna go thirty-five feet and this is what I have. And I thought that was brilliant, like I, I said that before. You're a brilliant architect, it looked beautiful. But now I think somebody has forced you into doing something just because of profitability, honestly.
Well, that's, that's a major consideration of any development. The, the development wasn't going to happen as prior. So adding the two stories makes all, all the difference for that.
I just always feel like El Cajon gets this, gets the bad rap. I, I mean, why can't we have the beautiful building you presented us before? And now we're, we get a box like we always do and we have a, we have a, I, I'm the, I'm the first person that hates that thirty-five foot requirement. I don't like it because it makes ten, ten, ten plus two feet for the floor joists. And then it leaves you with what, a flat roof or a mansard? And El Cajon looks sloppy like about to flat roofs and mansards everywhere, like we're still living in the seventies. I, I hate that. So I loved what you did before and what your solution was and how the towers and the parapets came down and came up and it gave it like a different flair in between with the materials. And now it's just, I, I think you know what I'm talking about.
Well, it, so are you. Let, let me throw out a couple of things. Your original, um, design was a vertical, was more of a box than this one is. You mentioned at the onset of your comments about the parapets on the towers and how they were more horizontal. If, if the commission so desires, I'm happy to go back and work with staff to get the termination of those towers closer to the original design. And I think we can do that.
I, I like the way that you had a gla- maybe you make one on the left, all glass with the roof structure that you had before and you only go four stories instead of five.
Well, the, the story, the reduction of the story will kill a project. And in the, the.
You have three stories before.
No, I know, I know. The cost came in so much higher because of the small site. It's only point five nine acres and the fact that the partial basement and all of the, the, the shoring and waterproofing with it. So that kind of caught us and that's why we had to go to the, the, the two additional stories.
I like, you know, one of the most beautiful buildings is that BMW. I, I don't think you'll argue with me on that.
No, I like that building.
So then I, I'm coming around the corner and I see something that's horizontal and linear and modern and beautiful and almost mid-century kind of looking and, and then I come across this and it, it is a big thing that's, you know, four stories taller. I, I drove it three or four times, uh, just to try to get the flavor of it. I don't, you're gonna have to talk me into it because I'm gonna vote no.
Well, I think that, you know, it's a very needed, um, land use in the city.
For sure, for sure.
The demand is so, um.
I was so excited about it.
And, and it is a small footprint, it's not a big mass building. It will have an acoustical benefit to the residents across the street, um, with the train noise. There's a lot of benefits of this project.
Exactly, exactly. I was excited about it.
So again, if, if, if the commission feels strongly unhappy to work with the staff to get the original terminations of those towers back to where we were in the original.
I would like to see.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Sotile, go ahead. Um, Mr. Garmo, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I, I understand that, uh, you have to think about the visibility of, uh, constructing that building insofar as, uh, making a profit and I do appreciate that. Um, and also, you know, being a, a storage, you know, place, uh, people do not live there. So how, how much traffic do you think you can get in that place where you have people storing stuff? And, uh, you know, not coming in and out, just coming in once in a great while to either pick up something or, or, or deliver something. How much traffic do you expect in and out of that building?
Commissioner, I'd be happy to address that, that's something I have the facts on.
All right, Mr. Jordan, please, please.
Self-storage generates the lowest of any retail or commercial traffic there is. It's about two point four trips per thousand, extremely light. And what happens is the conventional patron of a self-storage will visit their goods wa- for ten minutes, once every ninety days. So the amount of onsite traffic is extremely low. And the, the peak traffic times are offset peak commute times for work. So it, it doesn't get any better than self-storage for being a low-traffic impacting use. Very low time onsite, very low trip generation to the site.
One more question.
Isn't it true that?
Go ahead, Commissioner Sotile.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, um, insofar as, uh, trashy, trash concerns, uh, and a self-storage place, is there a potential of people throwing their trash in the street or, or their, the things in the street?
Not the way, not the way we handle it today. And that's, that's why the managers are so involved in policing that. So, you know, they, they can't get away with anything like that. There's TV, we'll, we'll probably have about forty TV cameras here recording everything that goes onsite. And the way we, we make that such a strong statement is when you walk in from the parking area into the office and you see through that clear glass, we have plasma screens, large plasma screens depicting all of those, those cameras showing, uh, the patron coming in. He knows that he can't be anywhere on that site and not be recorded on the camera. So that's why there is so little crime and so little of this going on in the well-designed self-storage facilities of today. It just doesn't happen like that because of the advanced security we have.
Is the building will be well-lighted on the sides and in the front and in the back?
It will be lit all the way around with shielded cutoff lighting.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, uh, any other questions? All right, well, I, I like the building, I like the fact that it's been a blighted property for some time now. Um, it's another step in to clean that whole area up. Does, uh, look nice next to the BMW dealership as well, so we appreciate your good project. All right, do we have any other, uh, questions for, for the applicant or do we have any other, uh, have we got enough time for people to public comment?
Hold on, just one moment.
And may I say, may I say something, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Robert Garmo. Uh, last year when we, uh, filed for the, uh, for the site plan for the, the three, the three stories plus the basement, we didn't have all the information we have today. Uh, the, the biggest one was the shoring and the SDGNE issue, which honestly just took months and months and months and to the point where we had to appease them. You couple those issues with, uh, with the, with the trade war that we have with China and, and I'm all for it. Uh, I'm all for that, but it, uh, the cost of construction, the cost of steel, the cost of everything just went up. And, and so it, honestly, it, it was just a matter of a business decision whether this, uh, you know, the three stories plus a basement would work. And it's just based on, and, and, and Mr. Jordan will tell you, forty-nine thousand square feet net is what we had before. Based on the numbers that we have, the cost of the shoring, this is not a flat pad. So there's a lot of digging that has to go into place, a lot of shoring has to go into place. But in working with staff, we use the best of materials, the best of lighting, the best of everything to honestly bring something to El Cajon that we could all be proud of. This is one of the first buildings that's going to go on that, that street. And the trans-district plan calls for higher density. It's not that we're, you know, deviating from what we're trying to achieve in El Cajon to say, well, this is going to be a sore eye. I think the opposite will be true. This will not be a sore eye. This will attract other big-time users to say, look, I can go a little bit higher and bring my project to El Cajon where, you know, all these other, other buildings are popping up. So I think this, this is actually a, 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 a step in the right direction toward attracting businesses that can see the potential to go a little bit higher.
I, I see nothing wrong with you going a little bit higher. You're going a lot higher. You are, you're adding two hundred more units. This is not just a little bit higher. I, I'm all for you getting another floor. I'm, I'm not for you taking advantage of a rule. I'm also not for you changing the development standard, which is suppo- I'm also not for you changing the development standard, which is supposed to be reinforcing calming measures, small forms, a sense of place and community. And we have just a five-foot, 56-tall wall, foot, tall wall there. And I'm not gonna have Alcohona's two tallest buildings be a storage facility and a former prison. And I'm thinking about the residents too, on the pier side. The people on the pier side, on the other side of the freeway, they're gonna look at us because they did not have a chance to chime in here because they're, they're not within the area. But those residents on the other side have beautiful views, great stuff. And now they're gonna be looking at a backside of a storage facility. And I'm asking you to take a floor off of it. I'm not telling you to go three stories. I'm saying just don't be too greedy.
It, it absolutely, absolutely nothing about greed about this at all. It's, it's just a, it's a matter of, of, of the economics of the deal. Uh, you know, uh, if, if, if the shoring costs were reasonable, I think we, uh, we, that probably would have been, you know, an option for us. If the cost would have been, uh, the cost of construction would have been reasonable, I think that would be an option. I, you know, I think it's, uh, Bruce put it, you know, this is the right thing for Alcohona. This is the right thing for that property, that specific pad.
Mr. Garmo, I love the fact that you wanna do something in Alcohona. I love the fact that you took this site. I, I loved it. I loved it. I loved it. I went back to my wife and I said, finally, somebody's gonna do something here. And this architect is amazing. He's great. And now I, I seem like, it seems to me like you're just taking advantage of Alcohona. And I don't like that. And, and here's you knew that the shoring and you knew that, you knew that the shoring and you knew that the grading had to be that way because it was in Mr. Jordan's very first supplemental. You look at his cross-section, it had the shoring, it had the, it had the retaining walls and it had the necessary plants. He's a brilliant man. Make him go back and design something just as brilliant and, and, and don't take advantage of his brilliance.
Commissioner Moreau? At this point, um, Commissioner Gar-
I have something, I have something to say.
Yeah, no, at this point, I apologize, Mr. Garmo. Usually, usually planning commissioners don't browbeat people like this. So, um, at this point, you know, I would, uh, appreciate Cabrera unless you have a question for him that can just end this conversation right now. Thank you.
All right.
Um, is there any other questions for the applicant? Questions? All right. Well, at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to close public hearing. Oh, we do have one more public, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. There was one additional comment submitted as a follow-up to the original comment, um, asking that we respond to the question posed.
And that question was, if you could re-
Um, the question was regarding why this height increase is not being processed, processed as a specific plan, why it is being done as a conditionally permanent amendment. Would you like me to, uh, respond briefly? Um, as I mentioned in my presentation, the increase in height is permitted through the transit district's specific plan. Um, this is not a privilege that, um, other properties in the cities may enjoy. So another proposed development in another area that chooses to exceed or wishes to exceed the height limit would need a, their own specific plan.
Okay, and what did we do about the building that was on Magnolia and Main? Because that one you said was about 56 feet.
That one I do believe has a specific plan, is also within the downtown master plan area, which also allows for some deviations to height limit.
Great, thank you. All right, is there any other, uh, public comment?
No, we've received, you know, further public comments.
Okay, well, at this time, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I second it.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Please vote.
Aye.
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 You, you wanted your roll call for closing the public hearing?
Yes, please.
I'll call though.
Okay, go right ahead.
Um, Commissioner Moreau?
Yes.
Commissioner Serco?
Yes.
Commissioner Cabrera?
No.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
All right, public hearing is closed at this time. Uh, is there any more deliberation?
I wouldn't mind echoing, uh, Humbert on the towers. And Bruce suggested he could go back and look at the plans to give the front a little more flair. I wouldn't mind seeing that.
We'd be happy to work with staff on that.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. All right, any other, uh, comments? And is that in the minutes?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment?
Yes.
Uh, looking at the area that's there right now and seeing that the area has, um, a problem with the debris and also a problem with the people, uh, living there, doing whatever they're doing there, uh, like homeless people and so forth. And having that type of building in that location, where right now it's an ice floor, I think it's a great improvement for the city of Alcohona and a great improvement for Marshall Avenue. And it's also a great improvement for people who are on the trolley who are passing by. Instead of seeing all that debris on a decent land and, uh, it, it, it's being a building there that's being used, I think, I think it would be a, a great feather on Alcohona's cap. So even though, uh, there might be some improvements to be done to the, uh, the way the building works, it's, you know, the applicant is willing to work this half on that. I, I think approving this, uh, project, I think it's, uh, well worth it. I think, uh, it will, um, benefit the city of Alcohona.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Sotile. All right, well, if there's no other comments, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. I move to adopt the next resolution order approving the CEQA determination in CUP 2019 dash 0011, amending CP 2250, subject to conditions.
I will second that.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Serco. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on the motion.
Commissioner Moreau?
Yes.
Commissioner Serco?
Yes.
Commissioner Cabrera?
No.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, motion carries. And, uh, I know you'll be working with staff on some of those details. Appreciate you bringing the project in and finding a way to make it work. And, you know, that area has been blighted for a long time, so, uh, we appreciate you guys doing that.
Very much appreciate your consideration this evening. We look forward to working with staff. And, uh, this is gonna be a good project.
Right, thank you.
And, and thank you, guys. Thank you, Melissa, for all your help. I appreciate, uh, I appreciate this very much.
I just wanted to say, I, I didn't, I did not mean to browbeat you. I do appreciate you very much and I do appreciate the fact that you have a very, very, very talented architect.
We are only trying to choose the best and I, uh, I second that. He's very talented. And we're only, not only in architects, uh, all, all the players involved are top-notch. But thank you so much.
Let him do his thing.
Uh, we will. Thank you again.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Recession?
Election.
Yes, okay, so we'll do that. I was gonna say, do we, okay, so our final agenda, I know, just let me get back to the top here. All right, so now what we need to go forward and do, gentlemen and gentle ladies, is uh, we have the election for chair and vice-chair for the next term. Uh, it usually runs from March to March, but we've been kinda gone for a while, so it's gone a little bit longer. But is that still kind of our timeline? It's about March to March? It's about a 12-month from the election day, right? Did we do April? Okay, great. Perfect. So at this time, the chairmanship and the vice-chairmanship is up for nomination. And we need to have a motion for, at this time, let's start with, uh, the chair. Do I hear a motion for the chair?
Not to be self-serving, but I, I can't remember. There've been a couple of us who've been bouncing back and forth. If, if you are willing, I would propose myself as the chair for the next year.
Great, okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay, so motion made by Commissioner Serco, seconded by Commissioner Sotile. Should we do a roll call vote for the chair? Okay.
Yeah. Um, Commissioner Moreau?
I say yes.
Commissioner Serco?
Yes.
Commissioner Cabrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Okay, great. And so the chair election is done. Now we move to vice-chair, which would be someone that would take place in the absence of the commissioner. And, uh, I'll make a motion for Commissioner Sotile.
I will second.
Okay, motion made. And, uh, let's go ahead and do a voice, voice vote on that.
Commissioner Moreau?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Cabrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Serco?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries as well. All right, as of the next meeting, I'm not sure how that'll work. It'll be in these chambers altogether or we'll be doing another one of these? But I'm sure it will be interesting either way. So do we have any staff communication at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, I do have one question for staff. I noticed that there was some demo being done, finally, on the Salvation Army building. How's that going?
I think in the interest of time, I was looking forward to moving along. Um, but that is something to celebrate. The building at 101 East Main Street was demolished, um, to make way for a new mixed-use project that has long been awaited by the commission. So we're excited to see that project only moving forward.
I'm excited to see that as well because I think it's gonna kinda be the first of many, hopefully. You know, with the retail on the bottom floor and a few apartments up the top. Not too, too high-density, but, you know, just enough, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another quick project highlight I would offer to you is the Hampton Inn, um, is now completed. They are waiting, obviously due to issues with the COVID-19 for their grand opening, but that project has been, um, completed.
Great, awesome. All right, anything else, commissioners?
That Salvation, Salvation Army sign is worth a lot of money. It's a collector's item.
American Pickers needs to come out and grab it.
Yeah.
So, uh, all right, well, fellow commissioners, if you don't have anything else, you can go ahead and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Second it? All right, whoever seconded, uh, motion made by Commissioner Moreau, seconded by Commissioner Cabrera, please vote. And, uh, do you need a roll call vote on that or?
So quickly, Commissioner Moreau?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Pollock Rude?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotile?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cabrera?
Yes.
Commissioner Serco?
Yes.
And do we know when the next meeting is scheduled?
Uh, we don't currently have the next meeting scheduled. Uh, the first, um, meeting in May will be canceled, um, but, but we're waiting to see about the second meeting.
All right, well, the motion to adjourn passes and, uh, y'all stay safe out there.
All right, good to see and/or hear from each of you.
Right?
Likewise.
Stay safe.
Till next time.
All right.